Now.
Yep, thanks. Excellent. Hello, we're live. Two seconds, I will grab my script. Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. Apologies for the site delay, we're about three minutes late starting. I am councillor Emmett McKenna, and I am the Chair of the Planning Applications Committee. I would like you to welcome you to the Planning Applications Committee, which is again being held as an online meeting, as permitted by the Coronavirus Act 2020, while social distancing rules remain in place. The public and press can still see and hear the meeting by following the link from our website. Agenda papers have been circulated on the council's website in accordance with our usual practice. To ensure that a proper discussion takes place on the matters before us and that where a decision is required, it is clear what has been decided and by whom, where appropriate, members will be asked to vote individually, stating if they are for, against, or wish to abstain. To help those observing the proceedings to follow the meeting and to understand how decisions have been reached, we will be presenting some of the information on slags as we proceed. Members and officers attending will be asked to introduce themselves. This is for the benefit of the public and also to ensure that all are in attendance as expected and that they can hear and speak to the meeting. To help me manage the meeting, members have been asked to make me aware if they wish to speak on an item in advance. This does not prevent additional contributions being made, but I ask all councillors to notify me when they wish to speak in the chat section of their screens and then wait to be called. This will avoid councillors talking over each other. When not speaking, please will councillors put their microphones on mute. When called to speak, please unmute your microphone and pause for about three seconds to allow for the slight delay in connection. We do not want to miss your opening remarks. I am aware that we are at the mercy of individuals' broadband services and it's possible that loss of connection may occur. However, as long as we have five members still in the meeting, we will be quiet. I will now do a roll call of councillors. As I say your name, could you introduce yourselves to the meeting? And could councillors switch on their video in preparation thereof? I am councillor Emmett McKenna, Chair of Planning Applications Committee, and I represent Whitelands Ward. I will call on the other members of the committee alphabetically. Councillors, please, will you state your name and the ward you represent? Please speak slowly and clearly for the benefit of the record. Councillor Devine, please introduce yourself to the meeting.
I'm Ricky Devine, Tynehurst councillor.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
Hi, I'm councillor John Ennis, representing Southcott Ward and also Lead Councillor for Housing.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Councillor Lovelock?
Hello, I'm Jo Lovelock, I'm councillor for Norcott Ward.
Councillor, thank you councillor Lovelock, we can see you now. Councillor Page, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Chair, councillor Tony Page, Abbey councillor and lead member for Strategic Environment Planning and Transport and Deputy Leader of the Council.
Thank you councillor Page. Councillor Robinson?
Good evening, everyone, councillor Simon Robinson, representing Peppard Ward.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Councillor Roland, please introduce yourself.
Yes, hi Karen Roland, I represent Abbey Ward and I'm also the Lead Councillor for Culture, Heritage and Recreation.
Thank you councillor Roland. Councillor Chalke, please introduce yourself.
Hello, I'm councillor Ayesha Chalke, I represent Cabasham Ward and I'm also Vice Chair of Planning Applications Committee.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford-Bell?
Good evening, I'm councillor Stamford-Bell from Peppard Ward and I'm Deputy Leader of the Opposition.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Chair, councillor Josh Williams, Park Ward.
Thank you councillor Williams. Thank you councillors. I would also like to introduce you to the officers who are in attendance tonight. They will not be on screen as much as the councillors, but it is right that I introduce them to you so that you will know who they are and what their role will be. Julie Williams is our Planning Development Manager. She is our Senior Planning Advisor and is responsible for the work of the planning team. She will also advise me tonight on any matters relating to planning policy, guidance and practice. Richard Etoff is the Development Management Team Leader within the Planning Department. We also have case officers Alison Amola, Matt Burns, Anthony Scholes and Tom Hughes presenting reports on applications this evening. Wendy Badison is a planning solicitor in the council's legal department. She is here to advise me on planning and local government law. This is to ensure that the committee makes a decision. It is both within its power and legally sound. Simon Hill and Nikki Simpson are committee service officers. They are able to advise on council procedures and they will also be taking the minutes of this meeting. I would like to advise members of the public that they will not be able to make any further contributions to this meeting beyond the written representations in the update pack. As publicly committed to policy on April the 27th, we will seek to engage the public further and I would hope that we would have some element of public speaking for our next committee meeting of June the 24th. As yet, I can give you no further details. With the introductions out of the way, let us now turn to the procedural matters. For voting on the information items of this meeting in part one of the agenda, I will ask, are we content to proceed? I will pause for approximately five seconds after answering the question and will take silence to mean that all members are agreed. Should you not be agreed, please indicate. We will now move to minutes of our last meeting. These are to be found at pages nine to fourteen of the agenda pack. Members, can you confirm that the minutes are correct record of our meeting held on the 29th of April?
Agreed.
Agreed.
Thank you. That is agreed. Turning now to declarations of interest under the council's Code of Conduct, do any members have any declarations of interest which they wish to bring to the attention of committee?
Chair, councillor John Ennis, it's myself of course. I'd like to declare an interest in item, agenda item number 11, which is Weyland Street, 11 to 13, Weyland Street, planning application as Lead Councillor for Housing. I would like to speak and then I would abstain from the voting.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Any further declaration of interest? Then we shall turn next to questions. There are no questions tabled at this meeting. Agenda item four, applications determined by officers using extended delegated powers. Policy Committee on the 27th of April agreed that the Deputy Director of Planning, Transport and Regulatory Services be given extended delegated authority to determine planning applications and three preservation orders to help reduce the number of reports coming to this meeting. It was agreed at Policy Committee that the schedule of those applications affected by the change in delegations be presented to each planning application committee for information. Please can I ask the planning manager to introduce your report?
Thank you Chair. Good evening councillors. And yes, as explained by the Chair, the report explains the background to the extended, the extension to delegated powers to officers. But it was agreed we'd provide you with a report with those applications that had been decided by officers that were either called in by councillors and then the delegation was changed or those items that we are now dealing with that would have come to committee as, under the previous arrangements and we've now dealt with. As we only introduced this change quite recently, we've only got one case to report to you and that was for the After Dark Club on London Street and that decision was to refuse planning permission and that decision was taken on the 7th of May 2020. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Thank you Julie. Do members have any questions or comments on the report? Councillor Roland, you've indicated you wish to speak.
Yes, thank you Chair. I just think that we'd like a, I'd like to say positively about the decision on the former After Dark nightclub or the After Dark nightclub in Cates Grove. It was a wise decision, I know they've come about this several times and I would commend that, commend that decision on that case. And I know that I prob, I'm sure that councillor Rose Williams would also second that.
Thank you. Can we, is it agreed to note the report? Thank you councillors. That's agreed. The next item relates to planning appeals which are provided for members' information at pages twenty-one to twenty-six of the agenda pack. Please can I ask Richard Etoff to introduce the item?
Thank you Chair. This report records the appeals lodged and decided since the previous meeting. There's a report on the recent appeal decision at forty-five Upper Redlands Road. You're asked to note the report. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I will call councillor Josh Williams first, who has indicated that they wish to speak, followed by councillor Roland.
Thank you very much Chair, I know it's a long agenda, so briefly. I just wanted to speak on the decision on forty-five Upper Redlands Road. I think that's a great victory for local residents in Redlands. Officers were originally minded to approve that application and it was a fairly rare event where committee overturned that and we felt otherwise. And that's been supported by the appeal decision. So I did want to note that's not a criticism of officers because planning is weighing up a balance. But from that appeal decision, I hope that the balance now tips further towards protecting our open spaces and our conservation areas. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Roland?
Thank you Chair, actually I'd like to echo, if I could, a lot of what councillor Williams said. The inspector report was, was quite clear in support of the open space, the spacious character of the Redlands Conservation Area as being a predominant reason for their decision in upholding this. And it also notes in section two point two of the inspector's report, to a lesser extent, the setting of Wantage Hall. So as councillor Williams was saying, it says something about open space, it really truly does. And it also says, says something about the open space within a conservation area. I would also draw, draw attention to the inspector's report in section three point two where it says that this report is now a material, their decision notice is now a material consideration for the assessment and negotiations of any ongoing applications as there is a current application. And I think we need to be very aware of that. Finally, you know, yes, officers, these are very tough calls and the toughest things come to the pack and occasionally we do, we do go against an officer's recommendation. But I think that we will find on balance that inspectors have upheld a lot of our decisions that we've made in that balance wherein sometimes we have gone against the officer's recommendation. But, but we've had a good winning year and that's, that's actually to be a positive and a credit, a credit to the balance that we have right now. So thank you.
Thank you. And now I'll also weigh in to welcome this and particularly its impact upon the current application in front of us, which I don't believe has shown as yet sufficient deference to the setting of Wantage Hall, which I'm very pleased that the inspector has agreed should be protected along with reducing the number of openings in what is a fantastic current red brick wall with ivy attached, which provides a very positive impact and setting to that corner of the conservation area. Thank you. Do any further councillors wish to speak on item five? And I move that we note this. Our councillors agreed. Thank you. And so there's no further comments, that's agreed. The next item is, is agenda item six, applications for prior approvals. Developments that qualify for prior approval are submitted to the planning department and are passed automatically provided they meet the criteria in the regulations. The committee has no power to change the decisions but may debate the applications purely as a to note item. I call on the planning manager.
Thank you Chair. This report is a summary version of your previous reports on these types of applications. It provides an update on the effect on free income and older housing implications and provides a simple number table as an appendix for the applications submitted for prior approval received and also those dealt with since 20th of April. So the last time you saw a report on this at your last committee. You're asked to note the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Then I will take it that it is noted and move forward. Thank you councillors, we now move to item number seven, which is an information report on 5G and how the planning regime deals with applications for 5G networking apparatus. I call on the planning manager Julie Williams.
Thank you Chair. At your last planning applications committee on the 29th of April, officers were asked to provide a report to explain the role of the planning regime in the rollout of 5G technology and to also discuss how safety measures are enforced. The report explains the current permitted development situation and notes that the main issues faced when dealing with these types of applications remains as when we first considered them 20 years ago, the appearance and health concerns. The report then explains how planners assess impact on the appearance of an area and tries to explain the role of ICNA, that's the International Commission on Non-Ionising Radiation Protection, their research and guidelines. The main point to make is that it is not the role of planning to regulate on the health implications of telecommunications equipment but to deal with the applications before us in terms of the structure and where it should be situated. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I'll call councillor Josh Williams, who has indicated he wishes to speak.
Thank you very much Chair. And yeah, I'm very grateful to officers for this report and answering some additional questions that I had on it as well. So thank you very much. And I think councillor Ennis and I are partly responsible for this report coming tonight. So I thought I should say some words. I know from the discussion last time that at least some of us were hoping that this report would be the end of planning concerns on 5G and I think it almost does that. And the report doesn't mention NPPF paragraph 115 and that is the paragraph that states that for a new mast, the developer must produce a statement that self-certifies that when it's operational, international commission guidelines will be met. So that's national guidance, that's not our own local plan. And that is the mechanism which enforces that self-certificat. And the wording of our local plan isn't there in full and there is an element which I think is important and that is the policy OU3, I think, which states that applicants must supply an acceptable declaration. So essentially they are self-certifying, but our officers can at least check that all the relevant information is within that certificate. They can't then check that it's all true, but at least they can make sure, make sure it is all present. And I think the report could make a more detailed reference to Ofcom as well, who on the 17th of April published information specifically to clear up some of the health concerns around 5G. So Ofcom has a full spectrum measuring programme. The latest results published include six new 5G sites and the measurements show that 5G is responsible for a tiny fraction of the emissions well below one percent of the guidelines that are set out by the ICN IRP, which I think Julie Williams pronounced as one word, which I'm not going to attempt to do. And so I think if we're able to Chair, what I'd like to see is the report slightly updated with those three areas because I think they're important. And I think I'd like to see that report published on the council's website so that in future, if residents have concerns of a planning nature, we can immediately point them in that direction. I think if residents do still have concerns, and they might do, we all know that, well, we've all seen recently scientists can disagree with each other. But residents should recognise that those health and safety concerns are not a local planning issue. And if they have them, they should raise them with their MP rather than through this process because our hands are tied by the NPPF and Ofcom is the regulatory body that inspects these on a regular basis and publishes their results. So thank you Chair and thank you to officers for this report.
Okay. So I'd like to call councillor Cam Roland first. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I wanted to thank councillor Williams again, we're having a lot of agreement tonight, for his comments on that and actually thank people for, the team for bringing this forward because I, to me, it does spell out what our responsibilities are and our responsibilities are not. I note in section four point five there, they're talking about the character assessments of areas because the last conversation that we're revisiting tonight talked about the, the area and the character. And it talks about the fact that if a mast were located close to a conservation area and heritage asset, there would be a basis for seeking further analysis. But in other areas, a subjective assessment can normally be sufficient. You know, I would just point out that, that we're in a nature beauty spot and with the, with the Burfield Road application too and in an area of open space and nature. So surely that also counts for something. But overall, I think it's a good report and I would, I would commend it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to particularly thank councillor Williams for some very helpful comments, which I believe we will take as a point of action, which I will then double check with officers that they could turn this report into something suitable that will be attached to our website under our current planning section that the public may digest themselves. I'll call Julie Williams if you could speak that that would be possible.
Yes, thank you Chair and thank you, yes, for the suggestions councillor Williams. Yeah, I would have a word with colleagues about how we get that information item onto our website and the best way to make sure that when we are dealing with applications and consulting neighbours on applications like these, that they get directed to that information. So thank you Chair, thanks for the ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree that it would also be particularly useful because it clarifies quite successfully the role of a planning committee in determining 5G, which is its impact on the visual built environment rather than the health concerns which are dealt elsewhere by other bodies. Thank you very much. Councillors, do we agree with that action plan forward? And note this report?
Yeah, agreed.
Yes.
Thank you. As before, silence is sufficient, but I will take your echoing of my agreements.
I want to be actively silent Chair.
I'll do. We'll move on to the next item, they've taken all's agreed. The next information report is on recent changes to planning regulations in response to the coronavirus outbreak. I call on Richard Etoff.
Thank you Chair. At the last meeting, we discussed changes to allow online planning meetings brought in by the Coronavirus Act 2020. You should also be aware of how regulations have been changed to help some businesses and to give more scope for local authorities and care providers to respond to the crisis. The report explains what these changes are, primarily allowing pubs, shops and restaurants to offer takeaway services and introducing a new class to offer temporary development or changes of uses to cope with those needing temporary care accommodation or additional mortuary space, for example. Planning officers were pleased to be given the green light to respond to such requests with a light touch. We've had very few comments from the public arising from these changes. The report then explains a more recent ministerial statement asking LPAs to support requests from construction companies to be allowed not to comply with conditions controlling working hours on site to allow social distancing on their construction sites. This is more of an issue as we only impose these conditions where there is potential for local residents to suffer nuisance. So we could not grant a general amnesty, but each request would have to be individually considered with consultation with our environmental protection officers and ward councillors. Officers have now introduced a process to manage these requests so that they can be registered and reported with a fee charged for the officer time taken. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillors, any comments to make on this item? Thank you. So I will be very happy with the additional fee, which will cover our officers' time and say that the report is sufficiently detailed and noted. Councillors, do we agree to note the report? Thank you. Then we move forward. We now move on to the second section of the meeting to consider officer reports presented tonight for planning applications. As mentioned in my introduction to this meeting, to help with managing this event, councillors have been asked to make me aware if they wish to speak on an item in advance. After the planning officer has presented the report, I will then call on those councillors that have already asked to speak. If any councillors have a question or want to comment, please indicate it in the chat function of this meeting so I can call on you to speak. For, yes. For item 12, application 191915 for 39 Brunswick Hill, as with the previous committee on 29th of April, members should note that there is a public statement from local objector, Miss Stella. I apologise, I'm not going to mangle your name, but it is in writing. You've indicated that you would have liked to speak on this item. However, in accordance with the new protocol for holding online committee meetings, you have provided a written statement instead. This was provided in an update pack circulated to all members and placed on the council website. There is also a statement by Neve Davies, the planning agent, presenting his case, also in the update pack. I will first of all call on the case officer, Anthony Scholes, to introduce this item.
Thank you Chair. The subject of this application is number 39 Brunswick Hill, which is a large detached Edwardian villa and includes a detached outbuilding or garage. It's set within a large plot backing on to the Basingstoke railway line. There's a brief update report for this application, which includes three new objections and an update on affordable housing and viability as promised by the main report. This application follows on from two previous applications which have been refused and had appeals dismissed. The reasons for refusal of the previous applications at, or the previous application at pack in September 2019 were loss of the non-designated heritage asset and impact on character and appearance of the area, the harm to the area by introduction of flats and failure to complete a section 106 agreement in relation to affordable housing and highway matters. Slide two shows the plans which supported the most recent appeal decision, which was dismissed by the inspector as it was considered that the loss of the building, a non-designated heritage asset, weighed heavily against the proposal and the moderate benefits of additional housing provision and making a more efficient use of land in a highly accessible location would not outweigh this. It should be noted that the previous applications were for the full demolition of the building. Slide three shows the internal floor plans. All flats meet or exceed the floor space requirements, have suitable access, access, outlook and access to daylight and sunlight. The reduction in onsite parking as compared to the previous schemes would allow for a large communal outdoor space on site and the lower ground, and lower ground flats are provided with private outdoor space within a excavated light well. The current application seeks to retain the existing building and extend it in the form of a two-storey side extension and a three- in the form of a two-storey side extension and a three-storey rear extension to provide eight flats, two two-beds and six one-bed flats. The proposal includes the demolition of the large outbuilding to provide vehicular access to the rear of the site for the provision of a parking court. Slide 4 shows the currently proposed plans, which includes a two-storey side extension, a three-storey rear extension. In relation to the previous reasons for refusal, the current proposal includes a retention of the existing building, extensions which are considered to be subservient to the host dwelling and appropriate in bulk and scale due to the size of the plot in which it's located. Due to the size of the plot, a significant distance is maintained between the adjoining properties to ensure no impacts on living conditions for existing occupants. Glazing on the north-facing elevation is to be obscure glazed, and that is to be secured by condition to protect privacy of existing and proposed residents. In addition, as noted in the main report, section 7.3, the introduction of flats into this would not individually or cumulatively dilute or harm an existing mixed and sustainable community through the significant loss of family, single-family housing. In addition, the applicant has agreed to enter into a section 106 agreement for the provision of a deferred affordable housing contribution, including an upfront contribution as outlined in, or a upfront as of occupation of the fifth flat, as per the update report. It also includes a traffic regulation order amendment contribution, as previously agreed. Officers consider that the proposed development has overcome the previous reasons for refusal and dismissal, and the application on its own merits would comply with the policies within the local plan. The recommendation is to grant, subject to the successful completion of the legal agreement, for an upfront sum towards and a contribution to amend the traffic regulation order. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Anthony. I will call councillor Roland. Lost myself. Sorry, councillor Page first, followed by councillor Roland, then councillor Stamford Ben, then councillor Devine.
Chair, thank you very much, and I thank the officer for the introduction. We've now had two appeals in recent years, which have both confirmed by the inspector's assessment the value of this building. In our current papers this evening, on page 99, it's summarised by the inspector. An important conclusion of the previous appeal was that the existing building is a heritage asset. In the previous appeal to which that refers, the inspector actually said, "Its heritage interest", and this is paragraph 6 of the appeal in 2018, "its heritage interest has more than sufficient architectural significance to be a material consideration in determining the appeal." Now, the appeal was, of course, as we've been reminded, for the complete demolition of the building, as indeed was the most recent appeal. But that should focus our attention on the importance of this building. And whilst the application proposes retaining the existing building, it proposes extensions to it, which materially impact on the appreciation of the building and on the area as a whole. And having undertaken an unescorted site visit again to look at the place last Sunday, the value of the building as it currently stands is not in any way to be underestimated. And indeed, the assessment of the value of that building, I think, is now pretty well established. The question is, is the future of this building better protected by seeing these extensions or in defending the integrity of the building as it currently stands? And I would argue for the latter. There are no reasons, there are no compelling reasons, there is no need to have extensions to this building. This building is perfectly large enough to be converted to flats as it is. The reason that compels an applicant to put forward the need for extensions is presumably because of the monetary considerations. There are no compelling planning reasons for extensions to be delivered here. And certainly, extensions that, in my opinion, detract from the value of this local heritage asset, which sits in a very prominent position on Brunswick Hill and is viewed from some distances. And so, Chair, I would argue that, and in fact, the picture on page 83, the site photo that we have in our papers this evening, I think makes that case quite compelling. And I would therefore not support a grant of planning permission that adds unnecessary extensions that detract from the value of this asset. And I would underline the fact that clearly, the interior, one would like to see as much of the original features retained. But I think one has to accept a degree of pragmatism when it comes to any future discussions, if there are around conversion to flats. Because clearly, retaining or looking to retain this building as a single-family unit would, I think, be somewhat unrealistic in the current climate. And certainly would be hard to argue in terms of our planning policies. So, Chair, for that reason, can I also thank the group objection two, which we have received? And clearly, there is a strength of local opinion about this, and that's been evidenced in all the previous applications and appeals. And I very much agree with the sentiments of that objection. Also, I thank for the late entry from the Conservation Area Advisory Committee, which underlines also the heritage value of the property. And also the wider consideration, which I don't think we should in any way minimise. The site as a whole, the driveway, garage, the pillars, all of that are part of an integrity, which I think needs to be protected. Whether one could hook in the heritage lamppost as well, which of course is outside the red line and outside the curtilage of the ownership of this site, is another matter. But no doubt councillor Roland will wax lyrical on the importance of that. And I'm not in any way detracting from it, but it is outside the site itself. So, Chair, I would actually propose that we refuse this application for those reasons. I'll finish.
Thank you. Councillor Page. Councillor Roland?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Chair. And councillor Page indeed hit upon a lot of my points. I would also like to thank the local group, the neighbours, that actually really went to a lot of thought. Twenty pages plus and a couple of other comments that were well thought out and very well articulated. So I would like to thank them for that, along with the CAC and the Civic Society, both putting in comments. I will speak just very briefly to define the setting and the significance that councillor Page has already brought up. When I went on the site visit a year or so ago, the view of the street, which I've been along with people from historic England who feel that that street could be a conservation area, or there's been discussion of it being a local area of special character, should Redding go down that route, that it is a special street and the view from the top of Tilehurst Road and down Brunswick Hill and across the chimneys that line down that hill over to the Caversham escarpment are something very special. With the multiple chimneys of this site there, that is compounded, and it is really a stunning view that I would not ever want to lose. There is a retention of the chimneys. However, the extension on the southern side absolutely just covers up the articulation of the chimneys as they go down the wall and really does detract from the charm of the building and the beauty of the building. You know, the NPPF in section 1.87 does allow us to note a heritage asset that may emerge. And even though we did not have sufficient information in the heritage-wise to make this a local listed building, it is still a heritage asset. And we have had that drummed forward very thoroughly by two inspectors that have said, "This is a really fabulous building." And so therefore, I would concur with councillor Page in that regard and think that there really is, in the fact that the application that we're looking right now at doubling an addition on to that building that envelops that building on two sides, is really too great of a, it's dominating the heritage asset, okay? Which is a heritage asset, we've defined that. And it is not subservient to that. I do not agree with the fact with it being subservient. Finally, in the property, and I'll switch and get off my heritage bet, there's a situation about potential flooding as the property slopes off greatly to the back. Remember, this is Brunswick Hill, slopes off greatly to the back, down to the railway. And if we are to have a hard standing of multiple, for a multi-car park, we're going to have flooding issues there that will impact neighbours too. And so the environmental aspect of this is also something to consider. There's a loss of a number of trees, although there's been mitigation as far as replanting. But all of these are forcing something that I will agree with councillor Page, I do not think should happen. And I will support the turning down of this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stamford Ben?
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to echo the comments that councillor Page and Roland have already made. I consider this to be a building with significant heritage standing, and I feel that we should keep it. I do welcome that the application is to actually keep and convert the building. But I do feel that the side and rear extensions are just too large. So the overall scale and massing is too large for the site. I am concerned, again, as councillor Roland said, with the loss of the garden and the hard standing for a significant number of cars. It's currently eight dwellings, which potentially could be 16 cars. Because we know lots of people live in couples, and we know lots of people have a car each, even though this is on a very good bus route. Unfortunately, the Prime Minister has told us not to use buses at the moment unless we have to, which does not really help things. And I feel that because it is eight dwellings, that it would have an impact on the neighbours. For the, just, you know, having eight households next door to you would have a significant impact. So all in all, I feel that we should refuse this application. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Stamford Ben. Councillor Devine? Please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, well, I'll start off with my usual habit of looking at the affordable housing and the FIG leaf, that is the deferred contribution mechanism. I really object to the idea of deferred contributions because I don't think they are ever going to produce the same sort of value of affordable housing as if we'd had an agreement from day one. In fact, I think we're now beginning to see a number of deferred contribution arrangements coming up. I wonder actually whether we shouldn't keep an eye on them, track them and see actually how much, what financial gain they actually produce for affordable housing. I think, as I said, I think it's more of a FIG leaf covering up a lack of contribution. Because the £20,000 initial sum in this case is not very great. Considering the whole value is possibly two and a half million pounds plus. So I think I object to the idea of deferred contributions. And I would like, if it's possible, Chair, we could ask officers to actually keep a record of planning applications that are agreed with deferred contributions and track what actually those contributions amount to. In terms of the planning itself, I too think that the extensions are overdone or overcooking the plot, specifically the side one. I really object to that one because I think that one is probably more noticeable. Although the back, again, is not a small undertaking by any means. And so I think that the total mass that is proposed here is really too much. Actually, the idea of eight, or was originally nine flats, is probably excessive, although it's within our current guidelines. One other point that I saw mentioned was the need for a range for space for bins. There was, I don't know whether that's been sorted out now. But there was an issue with the amount of space that we needed for the bin sizes we needed to install for a group of eight flats. And I just wonder whether that's now been sorted and whether there is in fact more room? Because we're going to start requiring food waste containers not too distant future. So I don't know whether that's been taken into account. Perhaps I could ask for a clarification on that. But as the application stands, I will be rejecting it.
Thank you. Councillors, I have no further indications currently. So I'll make a couple of comments for myself, which are, I'm pleased to see an application that finally retains the building. But to echo other councillors, the mass of the extensions are entirely inappropriate to the scale of the original building, particularly with its cumulative impact upon residents and simply its own character of its local location. I will now ask the case officer if there's any comments, and particularly to follow up on councillor Devine's question of technical issue, which was about the bin store. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'll pick up on a couple of points in councillor Devine's comments in relation to the deferred housing contribution. This one obviously has been reviewed by the council's valuer and has been found not to be viable with the inclusion of a full contribution. And we've negotiated to some level, et cetera, to get that. Also, in relation to bin storage, I believe details, I'll just double check. Apologies, Chair. In terms of the bin store, there is a bin store at the front of the property. Four, eight dwellings in flats, you'd probably be looking at just over, I think it's about six flats per 1100 litre waste bin. They have got space in the front. I didn't pick up the comments from the previous scheme. Details on bin store would likely be able to be accommodated at the front of the site in location as shown on the site plan. I don't think that would necessarily be unable to be overcome. I think, I don't know the exact standards for the food waste bins. I've been in contact with waste services and they've suggested a 180 litre bin for a scheme with seven flats previously. So I don't think it's not supposed to be a massive provision. But that's something that we're getting applicants to consider at the moment as well. I think that's all for me, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. So I've now received no further indication from councillors to speak. Having done that and having had planning officers' questions, I believe councillor Page was the first to raise a motion to refuse this scheme. I will then clarify with councillor Page the reasons for refusal. And if any other councillors wish to amend his motion, please indicate. Councillor Page?
Well, Chair, what do you want me to do? Make the sitting speech again?
No, just tell me your reasons that you wish to refuse this scheme in language that would be clear for officers and for the public.
Well, officers must have heard this. It's the impact of the proposals, the negative impact of the proposals on the heritage asset here.
Okay. Thank you. I've seen an indication from case officer.
I take it, Chair, I take it this meeting is being recorded?
It is indeed.
Fine.
Sorry, I guess on the points, the grounds for refusal in policy would be roughly, not roughly, exactly policy CC7, policy EN1, policy H9, I think TR, TR1 or 3 as well for the parking impacts to the rear. And those would bundle up together. There would obviously have to be a reason for refusal, for failure to complete a section 106 agreement and not provide the traffic risk regulation order amendment as well. So failure to complete that agreement.
Thank you. I see an indication from our legal officer. Wendy, would you wish to address the committee?
Yes, members. Because there's a recommendation before you for approval, although it's, it's a double header, but it was for refuse if the section 106 agreement isn't completed by the 30th of July, you need to go with the motion that's on the agenda paper, which is to grant and turn that down first before putting a motion forward for the refusal of the application, if that makes sense.
Okay, I will then call Richard Etoff to speak.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I was just going to add more about possible reasons for refusal, but following what Wendy Batterson has just said, it probably best to take a vote on the original motion as she suggested, Chair.
Yes, certainly. So there is the recommendations as printed to approve this. I will now call all councillors in alphabetical order. If you wish to vote for the recommendations as printed, which is to accept this proposal, to vote against, as I feel is the tenor of our comments so far, or to abstain on this item, I will call councillor Devine first.
Against.
Thank you, councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
Against.
Councillor Lovelock?
Against.
Councillor Page?
Against.
Councillor Robinson?
Against.
Councillor Rowland?
Against.
Councillor Sukala?
Against.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
Against.
Councillor Josh Williams?
Against.
And myself, I will vote also against. I take that as unanimous decision to refuse, to not accept the recommendation as printed. I will then raise a motion to refuse it and call Richard Etoff, who wished to comment on reasons for refusal before we vote on a motion. And I'll clarify those reasons thereof.
Thank you, Chair. And could Wendy come in if, if this isn't precise enough? But I've been back to the previously dismissed appeal and the, the, and why we refused the previous application. There, we were obviously looking at the complete loss of the heritage asset. Obviously, that would need to be changed this time. We've heard from councillor Page that the, and members, they're concerned for the excessive nature of the, of the extensions. That would then have a negative effect on the non-designated heritage asset. I would also suggest that that was taken forward as well to, to also take into account previous wording that was, it would, it would be out of keeping with the historic character of the street and not, not respond positively to the local context. So maybe put that bit in. And then the second reason for refusal is to do with the failure to complete the section 106 agreement in terms of affordable housing and the traffic regulation order for, so the, the issue there is the, the impact on the social infrastructure of the borough and of course highway safety. And in both cases, we'd need these reasons for refusal to be updated, to have the new local plan policies November 2019 and then our usual informatives that we have for refusal of these types of applications. Could Wendy indicate if that, if that rather jumbled summary is, is, is good enough for the purposes of, of officers voting on it, please?
Yes, members, that sounds pretty good. I don't know whether Anthony added some further reasons for refusal when, when this was being discussed earlier. Maybe he could clarify that point for you.
Wasn't suggesting any, any further reasons. I think Richard's summarized it sufficiently.
Can I, can I just say, Chair, that we need to get the policies in that Anthony previously mentioned? The key ones then are CC7, the design one, EN1 to do with conservation. H9 is the extensions policy that Anthony mentioned before. And then in terms of section 106 is policy TR3, the highway safety, and H3 on affordable housing. Thank you, Chair.
As I believe that's now sufficiently clear, we will move to the vote on this item, that we will vote to refuse for all of those issues that have been addressed and clarified by our officers to make it clear. Councillors, I will call you in alphabetical order to vote for, against, or to abstain on the motion to refuse for the reasons as stated. Councillor Devine, you first.
For the refusal.
Councillor Ennis?
For the refusal.
Councillor Lovelock?
For the refusal.
Councillor Page?
Yep, for the refusal.
Councillor Robinson?
For the refusal.
Councillor Rowland?
For the refusal.
Councillor Sukala?
For the refusal.
Councillor Stamford-Bale?
For the refusal.
Councillor Williams?
All.
And my vote, which is also to refuse this application for the reasons stated. That is now unanimous vote and determination of this committee. Thank you all. We now move to the next item in our agenda, which is to the normal running order. The public speaking items in, in line with our previous practice always come first. We now move to agenda item nine, which is 191749152 Cavisham Road. Can councillors please turn to page 41 of the agenda pack? And I will now call on the case officer, Alison Amoa, to introduce the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. The site is the vacant Bridge Lodge Guesthouse on the northern side of Cavisham Road in an area where the predominant uses are HMOs, hotels, guest houses, and to a lesser extent, retail. The second slide shows floor plans, aerial photos and a site plan. The proposal is to convert the property to an eight-bed, eight-person HMO, mostly with en suites, with a large internal ground floor communal space and enhanced rear outside space to accommodate cycle storage, bin storage, a parking space and a garden area. The rear of the plots is in flood zone three and the remainder in flood zone two. As the flood depth to the rear would be less than 0.3 metres in a flood event, the Environment Agency guidance requires a flood mitigation strategy. A range of measures, including safe access and egress to Cavisham Road, are set out in the submitted flood risk assessment as documented in paragraph 6.42 to 6.47 of the report, and a condition is recommended that requires the measures to be implemented prior to occupation. A number of measures, including triple glazing to the front windows, have been installed to improve the internal noise environment, and a condition is also recommended requiring the submission and approval of a noise assessment to demonstrate acceptable noise levels have been achieved. With regard to air quality, a number of measures have been identified by the applicant and are documented in paragraph 6.48 of the committee report. However, following a councillor's question as to whether a new trickle vent system which has been installed meets the requirements for long-term residents in an HMO, a further discussion took place between the officer and a colleague in environmental protection nuisance. And their advice is that although the measures set out could be sufficient without an air quality assessment and mitigation strategy, it is not known whether the property would be exposed to nitric oxide levels above the limit value based on RBC monitoring. They recommend therefore that a condition should still be included, which requires a submission approval and implementation of a detailed scheme demonstrating sufficient mitigation to protect future occupants from poor air, air quality. And an additional, an additional condition is therefore recommended in this regard, but is obviously not documented, I apologize, because this was identified following update deadlines. Although there are more than 25% of properties, but just over, within the HMO use within a 50-metre radius of the application site, this has been balanced against the existing character of the location, already dominated by a mix of other uses, where there are few single-family dwellings, and that the site is already in an alternative use. The proposal provides for a suitable reuse of the property in a sustainable location and offers the opportunity to secure improvements, including in terms of sustainability, flood risk, noise mitigation and rear amenity space. Officers therefore consider this to be a supportable scheme and is recommended for approval subject to conditions and informatives. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will now call on councillor Page, followed by councillor Rowland, then councillor Sukala, followed by councillor Stamford-Bale.
Chair, thank you. Can I draw colleagues' attention to a sentence on page 45 submitted by our environmental protection and nuisance team? And that's in the first main paragraph where it is said, whilst this was a guest house previously, the consequences of being exposed to high noise levels temporarily are much less significant than for a permanent resident. And that goes to the heart of concerns that I have and I believe others have, because that also applies to the issue of air quality and amenity. And we are not talking about people staying at a place for one, two or even three nights who perhaps are less subjected and are expecting a degree of noise and discomfort and lack of amenity, but we are talking here about a proposal for permanent residents in the building. And therefore, we should be looking to deliver suitable protection in respect of noise and air quality. In respect of air quality, let me just remind colleagues that the Cavisham Road is already documented as being one of the worst air quality areas in Reading. It is covered by our air quality management zone. And indeed, we have a number of diffusion tubes only a few yards from this place, from this application site, that confirm the high levels of nitrogen dioxide in the air. So it's not a question of whether there's a problem in the area, it's whether it's a case of, of how it is addressed and whether it's been adequately addressed. And that also applies then to noise. And we've had a lengthy submission from environmental protection in respect of noise and air quality, extending over two and a half pages. And that is not common with our applications, but reflects the importance of this. And I am concerned that the absence of any proper noise assessment, as is referred to at the bottom of page 45, is not adequate. It is not satisfactory at this stage. And it's not satisfactory to condition it, because normally conditions are matters that we can have every confidence will be resolved and are more technical issue. Dealing with noise and air quality is fundamental to whether or not we should be granting consent. And I would want to see before considering any approval, the full submission of that noise assessment and also the appropriate air quality reports. And the absence of those at this stage, I would suggest is not something that we should be looking to simply tick box for standard conditions. It is fundamental to whether or not this application is acceptable. I would therefore propose, Chair, that we refuse the application on the basis that it does not safeguard amenity, falls under CC8, and I've actually circled these, CC8, the air quality policies are not met in terms of EN15, and certainly we've not got the full satisfactory requirements under residential conversions. I'm sure there's others, but I think that's a starter for three, which I think is certainly strong reasons for refusing this application. And if by any chance the applicant is listening, I wouldn't also say this to officers. I think to suggest that because conditions are satisfactory, in inverted commas, for people staying in a bed and breakfast or hotel, they should not be in any way regarded as satisfactory for people that we're looking to accommodate on a permanent basis in a noisy and polluted environment. And until we can see the appropriate reports approved and supported by our environmental protection team, I would propose refusal, Chair. I'll finish.
Thank you, councillor Page. Councillor Rowland, would you wish to speak?
Thank you, Chair. I certainly would agree with councillor Page on a number of the points that he made. I'd also like to raise a few of my own, discussing the situation with the HMO being over the 25% margin. As a ward councillor, having looked at life and living along the Oxford Ode area, we have seen the potential detrimental impacts of a number of HMOs on, on an area. And so I, I think it's my obligation, sitting on this planning applications committee, to really watch that number. And I know that there are lodging houses and situations like that along the area, but that does not take away the fact that this is over the, the 25% limit on an HMO and this will be the tipping. and this will be the tipping point of which we could just go down and see successive situation there. And we're faced with a situation that we can't come back from so easily. So I'd like to point that out. The other thing I'd like to point out too is that 50% of these rooms range between 7.2 and 8.37 metres. I think if we've learned one thing from COVID-19, especially in an HMO life and should that return or should we have another one of these situations five years down the road? People that live or have a bed in a 7.2 to an 8.37 metre room have nowhere else to go. So the amenity area, even though that's I think about 32 square metres, I did the numbers last night and was weighing that up in my head, is large. And the officer does point that out. It is a kitchen and it is a dining room table. So there is no place for these four persons to actually sit down in the lounge area and watch a television or relax. The additional grassed in area in the back is only good for part of the year. I would also urge the fact that there's no trees out there doesn't exactly help the situation. So I think we have a duty to look at the types of HMOs that we are actually approving. And are we approving a place where someone actually will be comfortable living or could even stay there provided we've got a relapse of a CV19 case or something like that? So my concern is also that and what councillor Page set out very well in the other concerns. And so I will be supporting councillor Page's proposal too. Thank you.
Alison, you've indicated you wish to speak. Is that now before I call in other councillors to address what you've just heard or at the end of this conversation?
At the end of the conversation, I just wanted to come back on some of the points please.
Thank you. I'll continue calling councillors and yes, we'll of course call the case officer to speak if they wish to sum up and particularly address any questions that councillors may have addressed in this speech. Thank you. The next councillor I have on my list is councillor Sukala. Please address the committee.
Thank you Chair. Thank you officer for providing additional information to the published report and the update pack. It's very much appreciated. However, my reservation on the air quality remains. I would be uncomfortable in approving this application based on the current proposal of the trickle vent system without first citing an air quality assessment that provided evidence that the proposed measure would sufficiently limit residents' exposure to NO2. To slightly echo councillor Page, issues of air quality would be further and exacerbated because we're not looking at temporary residents as we would have had in the guest house, but long term residents. Therefore, there could be long term chronic health issues we would need to consider. And to echo my other colleague councillor Rowland, there is really no consideration for green spaces in this application. So on those bases, I do not support it.
Thank you. I'll now call councillor Stanford-Bill to be followed by councillor Jo Lovelock.
Thank you Chair. This is a road I know very well. I normally sit on the bus and go past it twice a day when I go to and from work. As councillor Page has already said, we have the air quality monitoring at the end of that road just by the roundabout. It's a very busy road. It takes traffic from Caversham Bridge and links it to either the centre of town, the IDR or the station. And we know we have a lot of traffic that comes through Reading, doesn't stop in Reading, but does come through Reading and reduces our air quality. I feel that this is not an appropriate place to cite an HMO with permanent residents in such a poor quality, poor air quality area. They haven't made an effort to put a green wall at the front or any form of planting barrier to try and improve the air quality. That's where private hedges came at the front of houses to try to improve the air quality. I think there's an issue with flooding. I'm not convinced that there's been sufficient work done to reduce the risk and to make sure there's safe escape if there was a flood event here. I can't see there's been enough work done to prevent an infestation of rats. I'm sure councillor Rowland is probably better able to speak about rats than I am. But when you have a lot of very intensive use of dwellings like this, you can get a rat problem. If you're near water and this obviously is very near the river, you again get an issue with rats. I don't feel again, as it's over the 25% limit, I think it fails to comply with HH, EN18, H10 and the air quality EN15. So shall I stop there? So I don't approve it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you Stamford, councillor Stanford-Bill. I will now call councillor Lovelock to address the committee.
Thank you Chair. I agree with most of what's been said. Not to labour the point, but I am thinking about the broader view of Reading in some ways in that we already have in many places, some of our gateway roads have increasing numbers of HMOs cropping up. And this actually, although there's issues about air quality and so on, this is actually quite an attractive road into Reading for people coming to our town. I know we'd wish some of them would have a third bridge to get over, but nevertheless, it is one of the more attractive areas as you enter Reading. And if we allow this one, which is already above the 25% of HMOs, I think it says 29% in the report, where's that going to stop? If, you know, who knows where the economy is going in the future? There are other hotels and B and Bs along there. Are we saying it's okay to turn all of them into HMOs? I don't think so. And I would very much support the views of fellow committee members about the need to turn this down. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillors. Do any further councillors wish to speak on this item? Take silence for no and then we'll call Alison Amoa as our case officer to address anything she wishes to based upon the councillor comments. Thank you Alison.
Thank you Chair and thank you councillors for your comments. Obviously I can see there's very strong views about this. I just wanted to clarify just a few points. The, obviously the property has already been lost to single family housing. So in terms of the percentage discussion and points raised in the report, my view was that actually the nature of that area has also changed quite significantly from being single family housing. I think each property, if there were a number of applications that came in for HMOs, we'd have to look at those on a case by case basis. But I did a balance and I felt that that was acceptable in terms of the principle. And in terms of the sizes of rooms and the communal space, all of the rooms, as I've identified in the report, do comply with guidance. The guidance is something like six and a half square metres as a minimum. So they are all above that with a number of them being quite a lot larger. And obviously from the applicant's point of view, they've got to look at clearly how to maximise the return, that's part of what they have to look at. But actually I felt that the rooms were a good size and the communal space would allow a number of different functions, not just kitchen and being able to sort of sit at a dining area, but also space for a sofa and watching TV. And there would be planting at the front and obviously that could be conditioned further to get further details for that. In terms of flood risk, the mitigation measures that were identified seem to comply and be in accordance with the sorts of measures that I have seen on guidance. And it was for us as planning authority to review that just using standing advice from the Environment Agency. And actually, the front half of the property is actually in a lower flood risk area. And you can get out into Caversham Road and then walk away from the site in the case of a flood event. And there would be the implementation of various measures to assist with that. In terms of rats, which I think was an issue that was raised not only by councillors but also by neighbouring property, there is a condition about bin storage and also that they need to be vermin proof because it is a matter that has been raised on a number of different sites recently by environmental protection as we have an issue, I'm sure like many urban areas. So that is something that could be looked at. And there's also a management plan which would be conditioned and that also controls those aspects as well about how people store waste and so forth. And then my final point really was actually clearly, I can see the views of councillors, but going back to councillor Page's initial points about needing to see those further details. If councillors were minded to go that way, then I just wondered whether it was something that could have been deferred. But clearly, if the feeling is stronger than that, then that's a position. But I just thought I wanted to come back on some of those points just to clarify. Thank you very much Chair.
So thank you. I will now ask legal if they have any comments before I move to vote. As with our previous vote, it is my intention to raise are we content to approve or refuse the, sorry, content to accept the recommendation as printed? Should we vote down that motion? I will then seek further classifications on reasons for refusal and ask a councillor to raise a motion to that effect. Wendy, do you wish to address the committee at this time? Take that as a no and then we'll move to the vote. I will call councillors in alphabetical order. Councillor Devine, do you vote for the recommendation to approve, against the recommendation to approve or wish to abstain?
Against.
Thank you councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
Against.
Councillor Lovelock?
Against.
Councillor Page?
Against.
Councillor Robinson?
Against.
Councillor Sukala?
Against.
Councillor Stanford-Bill?
Against, you forgot councillor Rowland.
Councillor Rowland, I do apologise. I'm reading down the list.
That's okay, I hope I'm still on that list, against. Thank you.
It fell over the page, that's all that happened. Councillor Josh Williams?
Against.
Thank you. And for myself, I also vote against approving this scheme as recommended. I will now ask councillors if they wish to substantiate reasons before we move to a motion for refusal. And I'll call councillor Page first.
Bennett.
I know, I know.
You listed it Chair, for God's sake.
Just for the convenience.
Well, if officers weren't paying attention, then I'm sorry about that Chair, but I specifically referred to the policies.
Okay, that's fine. I will then ask officers if they're sufficiently clear with councillor Page's recommendations and with those conditions also addressed by other councillors. Okay, as we have silence.
I'm here, sorry. I was about to type and then I wasn't quick enough. So in terms of what councillor Page identified, it was amenity which is CC8, EN15, also to do with residential conversions. I haven't got all the policies in front of me, I do apologise. I think there's policy H8, but then there were other matters raised by other councillors. So I'm not sure whether there is additional that's to be added or whether it's just really the focus on air quality, noise and then amenity. But other matters were raised, so I don't know whether other councillors wanted other policies. I'm having a look at the notes to see other policies being raised by councillor Rowland. EN1, CC7, TR1, TR3. So it's as if Richard wants to speak, so I'll be quiet for a second.
Thank you Alison. Richard, please speak.
Thank you Chair. I think we need to keep to this sort of planning matters here. There were some things that were talked about that I don't think we probably want to get into such as rats. But the way I heard from members and just trying to put it into something that sounded like reasons for refusal was firstly the environmental factor. So something like failure to demonstrate a satisfactory air quality environment and noise situation. And those environmental policies are CC8, EN15 is to do with air quality. EN16 is pollution and water resources which captures noise. So that one should be in there as well. Then the sort of the concern about the room sizes and the garden space, that would be covered generally within policies H8 and the SPD. Possibly a separate reason for refusal then about the, if members wanted to pursue it is the percentage of HMOs in the area and the attrition of the family residential character in the area. Again, that's policy H8 and SPD. And if members felt it was, they were not satisfied on the matter of flooding, that would be policy EN18. So those would be potentially four reasons for refusal. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. And to clarify for councillors and for members of the public, we are only asking if officers are sufficiently clear on the tenor of our discussion about our reasons for refusal. We are not asking officers to provide those reasons and to fill in any potential gaps. Councillors, are we agreed that our reasons for refusal are sufficiently clear and wish to move to a vote to refuse for those reasons? So is councillor Ennis, do you wish to speak? Okay.
No, I don't.
Okay, thank you. Then I will move a motion to vote on this refusal for those reasons with councillor Page to second base for the record. We will now move to a vote order and I will call councillor Devine. Do you wish to vote for the refusal for the reasons as stated and clarified, against the refusal or abstain?
For the refusal.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, for the refusal as has been clarified.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
For the refusal.
Councillor Page?
For the refusal.
Councillor Robinson?
For the refusal.
Councillor Rowland?
For the refusal.
Councillor Sukala?
For the refusal.
Councillor Stanford-Bill?
For the refusal.
Councillor Williams?
For.
And for my vote, I also vote that I'm for the refusal and this application is now refused. Thank you. We now move to the next item on our agenda, which is item 10. The address is 45 Watlington Street. Application reference 192052. Can councillors please turn to page 61 of the agenda pack? I will now call on the case officer, Tom Hughes, to introduce the application.
Thank you Chair. The application relates to 45 Watlington Street, a mid terrace property located within Eldon Square Conservation Area. The application was first before you, at 4th of March pack, where it was deferred for an accompanied member's site visit. However, due to lockdown measures in response to COVID-19, which were put into place for the site visit carried out, which was scheduled 26th of March. At your last meeting on the 29th of April, it was agreed officers could provide a series of site photographs in lieu of an accompanying site visit. Yeah, so the proposal for you is for a Yeah, so the proposal for you is for a modest 2.1 metre deep, single storey rear extension, the alteration of rear wood windows and the provision of roof lights. The next series of slides of various angles of the rear of the property. Officers consider that the proposed extension would be proportionate to the original building, both in terms of its scale and appearance, and that any harm to the conservation area setting would be less than substantial. The concerns raised with regard to the impact of the proposal on neighbouring residential amenities, particularly those of 43 Watlington Street, are noted. However, the proposal would accord with the council's policies and guidance relating to house extensions, both in terms of its depth and height. It is accepted that to a degree, the proposed extension would have a visual dominance and overbearing effect on the neighbouring property. Notwithstanding, the MPPF adopts a presumption in favour of sustainable development, against which such harm must be weighed. It should also be noted that a longer and taller extension than is currently proposed could be erected without planning permission under the property's permitted development rights. The officer recommendation is therefore to grant planning permission, subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will now call on councillor Page, followed by councillor Rowland, followed by councillor Stanford-Bale. Stanford-Bale, councillor Page?
Yeah, Chair, thank you. Both councillor Rowland and I had the advantage pre lockdown of being able to conduct our own site visits to this site. And we are concerned at the impact of this proposed extension and have some considerable sympathy with the letters of objection that are summarised on the bottom of page 66 and the top of page 67. We believe that the rear extension would cause an unreasonable degree of overshadowing and the planning officer has just acknowledged that clearly there will be an impact. And it's a subjective view as to whether or not that is acceptable, given the location and the conservation area and particularly the next bullet point, that there are no rear extensions in that whole terrace row of houses from the Lindhurst up to this property. The photos that have been provided don't show the row of cottages between the Lindhurst and this property, but none of them have rear extensions. And this would obviously set a precedent and an acceptance by the planning authority that I don't think is warranted or justifiable in the context of this location and the conservation area. So, Chair, I would argue that this extension is one that should not be supported. And would propose that we refuse the application. I think it can be turned down on the basis that it detracts from the enhancement or indeed the protection of the conservation areas as set out in EN3. It certainly, I think undermines amenity in terms of the neighbourhood, of the neighbour in terms of CC8. And I would also question whether in terms of the house conversion standards that it meets that. I'm just turning to the actual policies we speak, which I think is H9 house extensions. And it certainly doesn't respect the character of the area. So for those reasons, Chair, I would propose that we refuse this application.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Rowland, do you wish to address the committee?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I wanted to once again echo councillor Page's comments and to note that indeed he and I were able to attend the property as ward constituents, or as ward councillors to the constituents out there before COVID-19, which was very fortunate. And I am aggrieved that colleagues on the panel tonight cannot really get the impact that councillor Page and I noticed. This is a street in a conservation area, it's the main portion of that conservation area, or one of the main streets in that conservation area. And it is, although a slightly larger cottage from the Lindhurst on up, it is still a two up, two down kind of cottage, which is the dominant feature along that section of Watlington Street. The backs of those cottages are flat, there are no extensions. And that is very important to understand because the two buildings to the south, where I believe the applicant's making a case because those are extended outback and therefore thinks that he has the right, are of an entirely different time period. They're Edwardian, these are much earlier, I would say they're Edwardian-esque, but they were of a taller nature, they're three, three and a half stories tall. And it is a semi-detached Edwardian unit there. And so those houses are of a different character and there may very well be extensions. Those houses were built to extend further back. By that time, they had bas, they had kitchen areas that they were able to include and not have an outhouse, so to say, outback. They were beginning to think in that way and construct houses in that way. So those houses are perfectly correct as that. These house, this house and the other houses are not. Were we to grant the extension in this manner, it would be a precedent setter for others then to decide to do something with their property to extend outback. I might be so bold as to tell the owner that if he wants a much larger house, he should probably go to where he can purchase a larger house instead of trying to make of a property that is of the smallest nature within a conservation area into something that it cannot and I do not believe should be. And I will be going against the, going against approving of this extension and support councillor Page's comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Stanford-Bale?
Thank you, Chair. I certainly have to echo again what councillor Page Rowland has said. I feel that this extension's back would be overbearing on the property to the north, number 43. It would remove the natural daylight from her kitchen. We've seen in the pack there, and it was on one of the slides tonight, just the shadow from the fence and the proposed kitchen extension is higher than that fence, so therefore the shadow would be bigger into that property. We can, as councillor Rowland was saying and councillor Page also as well, you can look at the plan, which is next to this photograph, which shows that from the Lindhurst up to number 45, it clearly shows that there have been no extensions to those two up, two down cottages. And I think because it's in the conservation area, that is how it should stay. So again, I reject this application. So I think it was EN3, CC8 and H9 as policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any councillors wish to speak further? Then I will call Tom Hughes as case officer, if he wishes to address the committee on any of the points they have raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just sort of, well, I sort of reiterate what I say on my report really. I personally think that the extension is proportionate in scale to the original building. And then again, it's sort of the permitted development fallback position, which under PD, a larger extension is currently being proposed, could be erected without planning permission. So that's another consideration that I had when I made my recommendation. But in terms of the reason for refusal, I think that have been raised, I think, I'm happy with those reasons for refusal in terms of the policies. We have sort of standard reasons for refusal in terms of impact on amenity and character and then also policy EN3 relating to the conservation area.
Thank you, Tom. Then I will ask Legal if they have any comments before I move to a vote. Then we will move to a vote in line with the previous applications in front of us. The first vote will be on whether to grant this proposal as printed. You'll be voting for the approval or against the approval of this application or abstaining as appropriate. I will call councillor Devine first.
Against the approval.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Against approval.
Councillor Lovelock?
Against.
Councillor Page?
Against.
Councillor Robinson?
Against.
Councillor Rowland?
Against.
Councillor Sukala?
Against.
Councillor Stanford-Bale?
Against.
And councillor Williams?
Against.
Thank you. I will also vote against. As I believe the reasons for our refusal were sufficiently clear and substantiated, I will move directly to the vote. Before doing so, I will call Richard Etoff, our Development Manager, if he wishes to address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. I was just going to say, as we're proposing to go down the refusal line, you probably want the reasons for refusal as robust as possible. So I would suggest one reason for refusal because it's basically design. And it's a combination, I would suggest, of not being subservient as an extension, which is policy H9. Your members have alluded to the impact on the conservation area and we do know that areas in the rear of conservation areas do have value. And members have alluded to the fact that there are no other extensions in that area. And policies such as CC7 talk about the urban structure and the urban grain. EN3, as Tom mentioned, is where you would at least need to conserve the character of the conservation area. And then also in there is the sort of overdevelopment and the impact on amenity. So, and that's policy CC8. So I would say that you probably want a reason for refusal that somehow encapsulates all those things in one reason, Chair.
Yes. Thank you. That's sufficiently clear. It is primarily the impact upon the conservation area plus the other items and the subservience are all far more eloquently expressed than I could myself put forward. I will move to a vote that we refuse this application for reasons clarified during our debate. Councillor Devine, I will call you first to indicate if you wish to vote for the refusal for those reasons, vote against the refusal or abstain. Councillor Devine, please indicate.
For the refusal.
Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, for refusal.
Councillor Lovelock?
For.
Councillor Page?
Oh, sorry, I'm unmute, sorry, for.
Okay. Councillor Robinson?
For the refusal.
Councillor Rowland?
For the refusal.
Councillor Sukala?
For the refusal.
Councillor Stanford-Bale?
For.
Councillor Williams?
For.
Thank you. And I will also vote for the refusal. That is unanimous and the application is therefore refused. The next item on our agenda is item 11, 11 to 13 Whelan Street Reading. Application reference 191227. This is a Regulation 3 application. For the benefit of the public, a Regulation 3 application is an application for planning permission submitted by the council. All such applications come to the Planning Applications Committee for reasons of openness and transparency. Please, can councillors turn to pages 73 of the Agenda Pack? And I will now call Anthony Scholes to introduce the application.
Thank you, Chair. This application relates to numbers 11 and 13 Whelan Street, which was last year new, which is currently a vacant pair of mid terrace dwellings, previously converted into a C2 residential institution for supported living of vulnerable persons. Site location plan and photographs of the building are shown on slide one. The site is located towards the northern end of Whelan Street. The application seeks permission for the change of use of the existing C2 property to two five bedroom dwellings. There's a brief update report with this application which clarifies the existing use description of development, the affordable housing status and the parking permits condition. Further development would remove the internal links between the two buildings and reinstate the dwellings as two C3 dwellings. The proposal would also subdivide the rear gardens to their original state. The proposal does not include any external alterations ex front of the dwelling. The officer recommendation is to grant full planning permission, subject to completion of a unilateral challenge undertaken to secure one dwelling as affordable housing, i.e. the policy compliant level and conditions as updated in the main report and update report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I will call councillor Ennis first to address the committee, followed by councillor Rowland.
Yeah, I really want to be positive about this and support this as League Councillor for Housing because the change of usage as well, when it was a supported housing for vulnerable people, which was of good use, and I couldn't think of a better way to change the use to five bedroom properties, family properties, which are very much in demand and in short supply. So the more family homes that Reading Borough can build, the better chance it is. That's the reasons, I think it complies with planning. It's close to town centre, but that's the way it goes, Whelan Street is as close as it will get. I don't think that'll be a major issue and I think it'll be very much welcome. Efficiency energy as well, as Reading Borough are doing with building their homes. So very much welcome this and look forward to the application being passed, hopefully, and getting on and building it. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Ennis. Councillor Rowland, please address the committee.
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to thank councillor Ennis for his remarks. I mean, every bit of it was absolutely true. I think this is a wonderful thing that the former two sites here that, excuse me, were in multiple use by the, I think it was the Brighton Christian Housing Association for a number of years, are being returned to two single family large homes, which is something, yes, as councillor Ennis said, desperately needed and desperately welcomed in the neighbourhood. It's a conservation area, it's at risk, but it is part of a beautiful stand of faux tutors on Whelan Street. I had a very positive chat with the Reading Borough Council officers and what their hopes and aspirations were for this. And they also realised that it wasn't a conservation area and realised that we actually had a couple of really beautiful buildings here. So I hope they're beautiful, beautiful homes for beautiful families and that's really a win-win for Reading. I also must say, I am also pleased with the removal of PD rights for a C3 to C4 motion, should that come forward and should at any point in the future they be sold on. So I do appreciate that. That's, let's see, item number five on our recommendations. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Rowland. Does, I have no further indications currently to speak. Do any other councillors wish to speak to this item? Thank you. Then... Then I will welcome it as well and ask the case officer if there's anything he wishes to say before we move to a vote. As I have silence, I believe we're in a position to move to a vote. Also, Legal, does Legal have any comments? No. Then I move to the vote. We are going to vote on the recommendations as printed in both the main Agenda Pack and our Update Pack. You'll be voting for the recommendation to grant approval, against the recommendation or abstaining. And I will call councillor Devine first.
For the recommendation.
Councillor Ennis?
I'm abstaining due to my interest.
Thank you. Councillor Lovelock?
For.
Councillor Page?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For the recommendation.
Councillor Roland?
For.
Councillor Sukala?
For.
Councillor Stanford-Bale?
For.
Councillor Williams?
For.
And for myself, for. Of those who have decided to vote for or against, that is unanimous. Thank you all. And now we will move to the next item in our agenda, which is item number 13 Berkshire House, 252 to 256 King's Road. Application reference 200408. Please can councillors turn to page 107 of the Agenda Pack? I will now call on Matt Burns to introduce the application. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, and this application relates to Berkshire House, which is a student accommodation building on King's Road. Site location plan and photograph of the existing building are shown on slide one. The site is located towards the north east edge of the Eldon Square Conservation Area. The application seeks full planning permission for six replacement antennas on an existing three metre high rooftop mast. The application also seeks to provide two ancillary rooftop cabinets, associated infrastructure and a single ground based equipment cabinet on the east elevation of the building. Photographs of the existing rooftop mast are also shown on slide one and the replacement equipment is intended to accommodate 5G technology. The proposed replacement antennas would be slightly larger than existing, resulting in an overall 0.3 metre increase in the height, width and depth of the mast structure. Existing and proposed roof layout plans and elevations to King's Road are shown on slide two. Due to the very minor increase in size of the replacement apparatus, officers consider that the additional visual impact would be very minor and that harm to the setting of the conservation area would be less than substantial. The MPPF requires such harm to be weighed against the public benefits of the proposals. In this respect, the fact that the development would provide improved network coverage for residents as well as the emergency services network by way of an upgrade of an existing base station that is already shared between operators and would therefore reduce the potential for new base stations and masts needing to be established elsewhere in this locality, also within the conservation area. It is considered that this would outweigh the minor additional visual impact of the proposed upgrade works upon the conservation area. Accordingly, the officer recommendation is to grant full planning permission subject to the recommended conditions. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. I currently have no councillor indications. Does any councillor wish to speak on this item? Then I will make my comments, which are, I agree with the officer's report. I know the site quite well, as I used to walk past it virtually every day to my home at that time, and agree that the, it is currently rather unobtrusive and barely noticeable until you look at a picture to see it. And the slight increase in scale is insignificant compared to the public benefit provided. I will therefore move to the vote where we will be voting for the recommendations as printed in the reports, with the recommendation being to grant full planning permission. I will call councillor Devine, could you please indicate if you wish to vote for approval, against approval or abstain? Councillor Devine? Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
For.
Councillor Lovelock?
For.
Councillor Page? Councillor Robinson?
For approval.
Councillor Roland?
For approval.
Councillor Sukala?
For approval.
Councillor Stanford-Bale?
For.
Councillor Williams?
For.
I also vote for. Therefore, it's unanimous determination of this committee. We move to the next item in our agenda, which is item number 14, Barfield Road Southcote. Application reference 200339. Can councillors please turn to page 129 of the Agenda Pack? And I will call on Matt Burns to introduce the application. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. This application was deferred from the 29th of April Planning Applications Committee and it relates to the proposed replacement of an existing 15 metre tall telecommunications monopole with a 20 metre, 25 metre high tall lattice mast and ancillary ground level equipment within an existing telecommunications base station on Barfield Road. Photographs of the existing monopole are shown on slide one. Members deferred the decision in order to obtain additional information from the applicant in particular, if the mast could be secured in a colour, and also to seek a views assessment of the visual impact of the larger replacement mast on the surrounding area. A plan showing the location of the site and existing and proposed site layout plans are shown on slide two. Slide two also shows a sample of the colour fir green. And the applicant has confirmed that the mast and also the antennas and dishes to the top of the mast can be provided in this core finish and this requirement can be secured by way of a condition. Slide three shows elevations of the existing and proposed mast. As set out in the main Agenda Report, officers have discussed a views assessment with the applicant, but the applicant has advised that they do not consider such an assessment is justified or proportionate to the impact of the development. The reason being is that the existing site context is within an established electricity substation and with the presence of existing railway infrastructure to the north of the site and also an industrial site, industrial estate south of the site on the River Kennet. The applicant also advises the site is not within an area with any statutory designations and does not consider the visual impact of the development would outweigh the public benefits. Officers consider that a views assessment would be of benefit in assessment of the application, but that ultimately it is already clear that as with any large vertical structure, there will be some visual impact arising from the new tower from most surrounding viewpoints. The question is whether this impact amounts to a degree of harm that outweighs the public benefits of this proposal. And for the reasons set out in the 29th of April Committee Report, which is attached to the main Agenda Report as Appendix One, officers, officers consider that on balance the benefits of the proposal would outweigh the visual harm and the recommendation remains to grant planning permission subject to the recommended conditions. Further photos of the monopole and the site are shown on slide four. Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Vindications from councillor Ennis first, followed by councillor Roland to speak to this item. Councillor Ennis, please address the committee.
Yeah, thank you Chair. First I want to say, as I hope Wes Berkshire moved that caravan from that flat, it's been there a while now, hasn't it? I hear what Matthew says and I concur, you know, with reluctance. I think I'm one of these people, like a lot of residents who want the benefits of their phone, mobile phone anywhere they want to go, but without having to have a mast nearby really, and that's the issue, is that how realistic is that? And with, you know, 5G coming, that is the mast that's needed. And I'm very much welcome the earlier discussion about, you know, the planning recommendations, planning advice, which, which isn't new, I admit. And, you know, I think what you said is absolutely right there, Matthew, in the sense of the view will be instructed and residents have told us that it will. There are concerns which are unverified, which we cannot go into for planning matters, but they are out there about health factors. And I'd think as a council outside of planning, we would need to, you know, look at that and reassure. But the fact is, is public interest, our public benefit far outweighs. You know, the benefits outweighs a rejection of this and therefore, you know, to be with reluctance, but with a bit of a hypocritical reluctance, I will be honest, to say that we would have no alternative but to support this, I would support this going through a grant. Welcome very much the attempt to try and make it green and to, you know, to blend in because it isn't that bad area in many parts, but I would welcome that. So all in all, we'll go back to the residents of Southcote, explain the situation, the good work that's been done in the reassurance, but also the work to try and, you know, lessen the impact of view. But also to, to say that public benefits far, far outweigh the placement of that. So I would support. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. I will call councillor Roland, followed by councillor Devine.
Right, thank you Chair. I, I do hope I'm off, yes, okay. Definitely echo councillor Ennis's sentiments. This, this is, as I was making a point earlier in regards to the report, this isn't a conservation area or a heritage asset or anything, but it is, it is a beauty spot, it's a nature spot, it's a place that people walk around and they will see it. So we do have to be, we do have to be mindful of that. Again, it's one where in the end it comes down on the side that, that the benefits outweigh the, the harm. I was a little bit disappointed that the developer, when we specifically asked last time to bring forward some photographs to the site or whatever, didn't really seem to be willing to do that as far as I, as I could understand. But I do appreciate officers providing these photos, which I think are very helpful. Can I ask a point of clarification Chair to the, to the officer? Just in terms of fir green, is that the only option colour? Just like an answer to that question. Thanks. Are there other shades of green?
Yeah, thank you Chair. And I think fir green is the option that was put forward by the applicant. Officers feel that is appropriate and it would blend in to a small degree with the green surrounding and trees. If another option would be to consider, that would probably be something we'd have to secure by, by condition, so we could confirm the exact specifications of that.
Councillor Roland, satisfied with that answer?
I will be Chair, yes, thank you. I just was asking, yes, okay, thank you.
Councillor Devine, please address the committee.
Thank you Chair. Looking at this one, I think slide three more or less says it all. There is a 15 metre mast with a certain bulk that is going to grow into this gigantic 25 metre saw thumb, and I don't care what colour you paint it, at 25 metres, it's a good 10 metres higher than the nearest tree. It is going to be standing out like a very big saw thumb for a long time to come. I'm not at all happy with the idea of a 25 metre mast. And I'm not really interested in which colour it is because I think whatever colour you make it, you can't ignore the fact, if you look down from Tyllis, down the hill, towards the site, it will, it will show up. And it'll be, it will spoil the natural view, the current one, barely comes above the trees. If you look at the, the, the plan on slide three, you realise that this thing is going to stick way above the tree height. And as I said, it will be there for a long time to come. In terms of, people talk about the health issues on radiation, but frankly, 25 metres up, it's going to make no difference at all. And there is, as far as I can see, in my limited understanding, no, no danger to people's health. And in fact, I don't even think the present one either has any major effect on people's health. And there are no houses nearby, so there's no real issue from a health point of view. Nevertheless, it's the bulk of this thing that I really object to and I will be voting to reject this application.
Thank you councillor Devine. Do any further councillors wish to speak at this time? And I'll make my comments, which are, I go some way towards councillor Devine's view that it's bulky and not ideal. However, I'm satisfied that some mitigation is involved and that it's more appropriate to have a single taller mast in this location, particularly due to its geography as per 1.3 in the officer report for this committee, rather than have a plethora of several masts dotted around the area. I'm particularly happy with the idea that we've now got a co-location of several different operators within that single site. And happy with the choice of colour, which will mitigate to a limited extent, what limit we can do for mitigation. I appreciate it'll still stick out, but it is improved. I will then call the officer if he wishes to speak to anything that we've currently said. As I have silence, I will assume that is a no.
Nothing to add Chair.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Wendy, do you wish to address the committee from Legal? Thank you. I will now move to the vote in line with our previous responses. We have a recommendation currently as printed that the materials to be used in the construction of the external services development be printed or coded with fir green and before it's operational. This is in addition to the previous recommendations in Appendix One of our current report. Councillors, we'll now move to the vote, which is to approve the proposal to grant permission with those amendments, to vote against, i.e. to refuse permission or to abstain. Councillor Devine, you're first, can you please indicate? Councillor Devine?
Against the proposal.
Thank you councillor Devine. Councillor Ennis?
For.
Councillor Lovelock?
For.
Councillor Page?
For.
Councillor Robinson?
For the proposal.
Councillor Roland?
For.
Councillor Sukala?
For the proposal.
Okay. Councillor Stanford-Bale?
For.
Councillor Williams?
For.
And myself will also vote for. While that's not unanimous, we do have a grant of approval. Thank you councillors. That is the last item on our agenda, so I will now call this meeting to a close. Thank you for your time and I'd also like to thank officers as well for our two hour meeting.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you Chair. Thank you all and good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night, all.
All best. Yeah, good night.